Called the meeting to order. Welcome Town of Garner to the regular town council meeting on June the 4th. And it's a beautiful night in Garner and we've got a beautiful crowd here with lots of meaningful input to help us make Garner a great place to live. Thanks for being here. And I think we will officially call the roll at this moment. If I could ask our town clerk to call the roll.
I'm Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Member Behringer. Councilmember Dellinger. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger had requested an excused absence earlier today. We've discussed it. Is there a motion to make that an excused absence?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Vance, seconded by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of making this an excused absence, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. It's unanimous. Damien, your excuse tonight, but come back next time. With that being said, I think I'm going to call on Councilman Singleton to lead our pledge of allegiance and then our invocation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Instead of the invocation tonight, I'm going to do something a little bit different for a couple of minutes. You can reflect back on the last 10 days or so here in Garner. We've had some really good things happen and we've had some sad heartbreaking things happen. I'll start off with the good. We had a great Memorial Day celebration Monday, the 27th. Mr. Matthews, one of the leaders on that group, despite the rain two years in a row, we had a group picnic shelter that was there to honor those men and women who gave their all and that's always a positive experience. We have a great Veterans Day and Memorial Day event here every year in Garner. So that's a big positive. Another positive is last Tuesday, we named Ms. Miller as our town manager. And that's a positive. We look forward to working with her and her many years of experience. She has 26 years' experience as an assistant manager in Williamsburg, Virginia, and Durham County and here in Garner. So we look forward to working with her and she's a big radio star now because she's been on the radio two days in a row. And our third good thing is our Garner Magnet High School softball team, the girls softball team, won on Saturday, the state championship, 12 to 1 on Saturday. I believe the team played weddling. They only given up 20 runs all year and Garner scored 14 or 15 in two games. So that's great. So as I recall, it's our 15 championship. I went to Garner and graduated in 80. So we won the girls' basketball and baseball in 78, three months apart, football in 87, boys' basketball 15, and other girls' softball in 24. So it's a great day. Tip our hat to the players, the coaches, and the parents because that's a heck of an accomplishment here. And I just want to congratulate them. I hope Mayor, we might bring them or the coaches or someone in and honor them. I'm sure y'all are working on that. And we've had some tough things happen here also. Probably one of the most heartbreaking happened on Memorial Day afternoon, tragic wreck when three lives were taken. Parents Tyler and Susan and their son Miles, 28, 29, and 8 were killed tragically. And there have been vigils here in Garner. I was at one last night with the scout troop, this Cub Scout troop over at Garner Methodist. They've been in different places. They had a run at the park on Saturday morning. They had a vigil at Wake Med when they took Miles off life support to save his organs. I believe I read where it could have been to help up to eight kids. And so a young life was taken. Three young lives were taken tragically and it's tough. It's heartbreaking. It's touched a lot of people, not just in Garner, but in this area and statewide. So I mentioned that. Also mentioned a young man, some of you may have heard of him. His name is Grayson Murray. He was a PGA golfer, age 30. Very good. He won a tournament event this year. He battled addiction issues and then mental health issues and depression and he took his own life. He has roots here in Garner. His grandfather, Mr. Watkins, John Watkins, served on this board and as mayor and as a council member for many years. And his mother grew up here in Garner. So he has roots here in Garner. So we want to remember that family for what their loss that they're going through because he was very, very well-liked and popular. He lobbied the PGA for years for more money and support for programs to help people with depression and mental health issues and addiction issues. Hopefully, from his death, that will happen. You hate to say hopefully it'll happen, but maybe that'll get what needs to be done for these outreach programs to help people. And the third loss I mentioned, and some of you may have known, is we had a mayor here, Mr. Joe Creach. He died at 89, last week ago Saturday. Mr. Creach served as mayor for 12 years and the towns from the Board of Alderman for four years. He was instrumental in where town hall was sitting today. He's instrumental in Garner Rec Park on Garner Road and South Garner Park. I knew Mr. Creach well because I grew up with his son from preschool on up till right now. I was at the service on Monday, last Friday. And I spent a lot of time at their house. I can remember back in the mid-'70s. I'm 13 to 14 years old. He's looking at some site plan, which I didn't know was a site plan. I just thought it was a map. He says, "Come here, I want to show you something." And he shows me Timber Drive. This is the mid-'70s. Timber Drive opened in the early '90s. And he says, "Look at this." And he was a DOT engineer also, so he had a lot of knowledge of that. But he showed it to me, explained it to me. I'm sitting there going, huh? And look what happened because he was there when that ground break, that ribbon cutting took place many years ago. But he was a good man. He served many years, as I say here. He and his wife moved back to Archer's Lodge where they both came from several years ago. And so you mentioned Mr. Creach's years of service, Mr. Watkins. And if you go through the door there and look at the left and you see James Stevens' award, here's years of service. Those three men gave over 50 years of service here to the Town of Garner as council members, Board of Alderman members then, and Mr. Watkins, Mr. Creach as mayor. I just want to mention the positives that we had, the good things, and also the heartbreak for these families. People that had roots here in Garner, tied here to Garner. The Campbell family lived here in Garner. Young Miles was at Garner Baseball and then the mixed martial arts and then scouts. And his dad enjoyed running at White Deer Park. So just wanted to bring that up. I'll close. I tried to think of something to do with hope. I talked with my wife and she gave me some quotes from Dr. Martin Luther King that might be something to reflect on about hope. Hope is being able to see that there's light despite all of the darkness. Hope is important because it can make the present moment less difficult to bear because we must accept finite disappointment, but we must never lose infinite hope. So again, this is something a little different, but I just wanted to bring this up because of the impact that these events have had here in Garner the last week. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Very informative, very moving, very, very thought-provoking. Thank you very much. And now to the more mundane function of conducting a town council meeting. We come to the petitions and comments section and I'm obligated to read these special words every time just to remind us what this is about. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group, spokespersons, must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on the subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I'll ask our town attorney, has anyone signed up to speak in this part?
No one has signed up for the petitions and comments portion of the meeting.
Thank you. We move to the adoption of the agenda. The agenda was available to everyone. It's at everyone's seat here. And I will ask the council member, is there for a motion to adopt this agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Matthews makes the motion and Mr. Singleton seconds. The motion is made to adopt the agenda. All council members in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We move along to the proclamations, excuse me, the presentations section, which there will be a proclamation and it will be read by me. It was issued by me and I'm proud to read this one. This is about the Juneteenth celebration. And this proclamation provides some of the background and historical significance. It's whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring enslaved people in Confederate-controlled territory free and paving the way for passage of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States. And whereas enforcement of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed by up to almost two and a half years in some Confederate territories and by more than two years in the area that would become Garner. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger read to the people of Galveston, Texas, General Order Number 3, which stated, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves. And whereas June 19th thus has acquired special meaning and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated as Freedom Day by many African-Americans for over 150 years. Whereas in Wake County, there were more than 10,000 enslaved people, nearly two-fifths of the county's population recorded in the 1860 census. And whereas these citizens contributed greatly to the prosperity and development of the area that would become Garner, both during their enslavement and after they were freed. And whereas the creation of a Garner Juneteenth Committee was authorized by this town council to raise awareness about Juneteenth and about other information that places Juneteenth in historical context. And whereas the United States celebrates its freedom from tyranny on July 4th, 1776, but we acknowledge that not all Americans were free on that day. Therefore, Juneteenth should be celebrated alongside July 4th, Independence Day, and not in lieu of it. Now therefore, I, Buddy Gupta, Mayor of the Town of Garner, do hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth Freedom Day. But the biggest news is that on June the 15th, we'll have the Garner Celebration of Juneteenth. We're getting a jump on it by four days. The official day is the 19th, but Saturday falls on the 5th. And we'll have a great occasion over the Garner Performing Arts. Some of you have been there before and I want to just mention the members of the Juneteenth Council. I'm not sure if any of them are here tonight. Councilman Dellinger's been a key part of this, absent tonight. Ernestine Durham, Melanie Payden, Professor Mary D. Williams, Dr. Cleopatra Lashwell, Neil Paget, Pastor Ben Acton, and town staff members Kyle Kettler and Rick Mercer have all been instrumental in putting this together. Thank all of you for your help. It's a big deal. Y'all come out to the celebration if you will. If not, raise a glass, wave a flag, celebrate another Freedom Day in America. That being said, we will move to the consent agenda. Again, these are items that have been studied by the council in the background with the help from staff. There's four of them listed here on the consent agenda. And if no council member wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Socket.
Mr. Vance moves and Mr. Matthews, I think, seconded. Okay? All council members in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it's unanimous. That one passes. Now we get down to some serious business. Here comes some public hearings, okay? And it's also important to read a few words here to get us in the right frame of mind on these. And this is a public hearing we're about to deal with here related to town hall annex financing. The decision had been made to purchase the building. This resolution is about how to finance it. And I need to remind all of us, this is a public hearing on a proposed installment financing agreement in the principal amount not to exceed $6,250,000 for the purpose of acquiring an existing building and to renovate that building for additional town office space. Notice of this public hearing was published in the News and Observer on May 24, 24. Nater's notice of the public hearing has been posted on the town website since May 22, 24. And after a brief report presented by town staff, we will hear from any members of the public wishing to be heard on the advisability of entering into this finance agreement. So let's start by calling on our finance director, Mr. David Beck, to kind of explain some of the ins and outs. Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and all of council. As you mentioned, tonight, we are holding a public hearing and asking council to consider approval of a resolution that would authorize town staff and our consultants, bond counsel and others to proceed forward with seeking approval from the local government commission for a financing transaction, as you mentioned, not to exceed 6.25 million. The purpose of this financing is to fund the renovations and outfit of what's now referred to as the Town Hall Annex, which is the 109 Forest Hills building that was purchased several years ago. So the financing would go towards that. There would be a little bit that would go back into the town's fund balance as a reimbursement for the initial purchase of the building. But the primary purpose of the funding is to have the funds to move forward with the renovations. We ask our financial advisors, Davenport and Company, to assist us with creating and distributing requests for proposals to banks and lending institutions. They distributed that to over 60 institutions and banks and we received nine bids for the financing. They evaluated those bids and put together some documentation for staff to review. And staff is recommending that we proceed forward with awarding the financing to J.P. Morgan Chase. They gave us several different options that we could choose from for the financing as far as the big difference between all the options was the prepayment terms. So there were certain limits as far as the number of years on prepayment, before prepayment was allowed. And staff felt that the best option for us, even though the interest rate's a little bit higher, was to go with the option that had the shortest sort of blackout period on prepayment. That allows us, you know, to pursue a refinancing in the future if rates go down sooner than we would under the other options, even though we may pay a little bit more interest upfront if that refinancing opportunity comes along. We may reap a bigger benefit from that than the interest rate is going to cause us, cost us initially. So as I mentioned, tonight is the first step in this financing process. So we're asking council to hold the public hearing, consider adopting the resolution that's been presented to you, which also awards the financing to J.P. Morgan Chase. And then we would have one more action in a couple of weeks from now that council would have to take as well. And then our application for financing will be heard by the local government commission the first week in July. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions or if we want to proceed to the public hearing, we could do that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. And I'll ask our council members first if they have any questions for our finance director. Mr. Singleton, question? No questions? Thank you. But stand by, we might have some other questions here. And we also will recognize any individuals who have signed up to speak on this topic. And I'm going to ask our town attorney, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have two individuals who've signed up. The first one is Grace Isert.
Yes, if you would, please come to the podium and tell us your name and your address for the record and we'll let you speak to this topic here about finance.
I didn't sign up to speak on that topic.
Okay, well, which one do you want to speak about?
None of them want to speak. It's just the general.
Okay.
She wants to speak at petitions and comments.
Okay, that was at the petitions and comments and she did sign up for that one or we just misunderstood which one she was signing up for?
She and Ms. Holloway signed up on the town hall annexing sign-in sheet.
But you wanted to talk about the general things, not about this financing. Okay, I'll tell you what, we'll finish up this one and come back to the general petitions that we skipped over. Does that make sense?
If I could ask, could you get them a sign-in sheet?
Yeah, we'll get it straightened out. Okay, good. Well, we definitely want to hear from you. We'll just kind of go through it one item at a time. We'll come back to your general comments. Thank you. Okay. So there was no one else signed up to speak about the financing agreement here?
Ms. Holloway, you wanted to speak on something else? Okay.
Okay, we'll come back to the general comments if that's okay. Thank you. So we've heard from our finance director. We had no question from the council members related to financing of this renovation and property acquisition. That being said, I'll ask council members, is there a motion to adopt resolution, Resolution 2024-2581, that would allow them to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, if you could close the public hearing?
Thank you. Thank you. I always like tapping that out, closing that meeting out. We closed the public hearing and now if there's no more questions or discussion from council members, I will accept a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2024-2581.
Thank you. Mr. Vance is seconded by Mr. Singleton, I think. Thank you. All council members in favor of adopting that resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And before we jump into the, thank you, Mr. Beck, great job you're doing for us. We really appreciate all the hard work that goes into that, a lot of research. And before we jump into the quasi-judicial hearing, which is a little involved, we'll jump back to the general comments and petitions that we inadvertently hedged you on the wrong page before. So if that suits you, I'm going to send my attorney to make sure the paperwork is done correctly. And while you're finishing that up, I'll just remind everyone that we do encourage the people who speak to limit your comments to three minutes. And we have a newfangled system up there that Mr. Mercer and his team have put together. It'll show you a little three-minute countdown. It'll show green and then yellow and then red, but we won't turn the dogs loose or anything at three minutes, but we just ask for that. So thank you. If you would, state your name and address, please.
My name is Grace Isert, 2005 Ford Gates Drive in Garner. On December the 10th, our home was destroyed in the tornado and the property behind our backyard, it's a lot of destruction. And I just want to know, is that something that the town comes to and take away those trees and debris or how does that, how does that happen as far as removing the debris from the tornado?
Is that your main comment and question this evening?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe that is town property behind you there.
And Mayor, I can provide some updates and information on this. So thank you for joining us today, Ms. Isert. So we just approved a contract with a contractor to come out and start that cleanup work. So they should start by the end of the month. And so that'll include cleaning up the debris, chipping some of the stubs that are down and all that kind of stuff. So you should start seeing some progress on cleanup probably by the end of this month. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Town Manager Miller. Boy, asking, you shall receive an answer.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Holloway?
My name is Carol Holloway and I'm at 102 Panory Circle. And I had presented before, just wanting to know how do a citizen keep up with the motels, restaurants, new coming to town? Now I know white oak, white oak is developing. I ran into Phil Matthews during the polling thing and he was saying, "Watch out for white oak." Another concern is the, you know, how do we find out, you know, what type and when are they coming because Garner is growing? And also I had mentioned before about a lot of children are here in the area and whether we take our money to Raleigh, Cary, Clayton, what these children activities have and to pay to have children activities in other towns that, you know, is it possible for Garner to get some of that so we can keep our money right here in town?
You're asking some good questions.
Yes.
While we don't have to respond tonight, but sometimes there's somebody on the staff that wants to respond.
Mr. Hodges, would you provide some upgrade on that, please?
Yes, Ms. Miller. Excuse me, Ms. Holloway. So we have a number of ways that folks can stay informed about things happening in our town. If you're not already signed up for our town's e-newsletter, I would encourage you to do that. And we can show you on the town's website where you can do that. We also have an app for the town called Garner Info that you can install on your phone. And that will also provide information as well as provide you a platform that you can put in request. So similar to the request that was just made about the cleanup, that is the kind of thing that you could put in the app. It gets sent to the appropriate departments. So if you put that in in the evening, by the time we get into work the next day, it's already routed to the appropriate departments to take care of the issue and answer that. So that's a little indirectly related to your question, but some good information for you to know about as well. Another resource would be staying involved with our Chamber of Commerce. That is a membership-based organization, but they often are promoting some of our new businesses that come businesses that come to town. Our economic development staff is also doing that, but even if you're not a member of the Chamber of Commerce, you could still visit their website and see some of the ribbon cuttings and the announcements for new businesses that are coming our way.
Thank you so much.
It's almost like we set you up to ask that question so we could talk about what we're doing. Thank you so much.
And yes, is it Ms. Caraway? Ms. Caraway? And also, I would say, I would recommend getting his number, Mr. Hodges' number?
I'll walk out with it. Yes.
Okay.
There you go. Well, excellent, those were wonderful questions, and questions that are on the minds of a lot of citizens, so thank you for asking those, and thank our town manager and assistant town manager, Hodges, here for the great information that we got. So that's good stuff. Well, so much for the fun part, let's get back to business here, and let's jump into a quasi-judicial hearing, and boy, these are even more complicated and regulated, even more rules to go by, even more words that I have to read before everyone that we start. But here we go. Okay, and this is related to the apartment development. Let's see. Swift Creek Apartments, and this is a special use permit that's before us. This case involves an application for a special use permit, which requires a quasi-judicial hearing. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, and any ex parte communications, any close familiar, familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome of this case. Any council member have any of that? No. Okay. This is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to the impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members must disclose discussions pertaining to the case or any information received outside of the hearing. The property was considered at prior council meetings in conjunction with rezoning and special use permit decisions. And again, I ask again, do any council members have any additional disclosures of ex parte communication? And the answer is no. All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must sign up to speak and be sworn in by the town clerk. At this point, I think I'm going to ask our town attorney to swear in anyone who will be testifying in this case or has signed up to speak.
The town clerk, may do that. So if everyone who has signed up and wants to speak in this hearing could go to the back corner of the room, you can get sworn in at that time.
Thank you. Proper traffic direction. Can I have your bottom?
Yes. I can put my address down. Sorry.
Please truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call on our staff member to be the presenter, Allison Jones, our developmental review manager. So Ms. Jones, if you would give us a little background and get us started on this discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. I'm here to present Swift Creek Apartments, also known as SUP SP 2302. The applicant is Bass Nixon Kennedy, also known as B&amp;K. The owner is Swift Creek Apartments LLC. B&amp;K submitted a special use request to build a mixed-use multifamily in retail development consisting of no more than 630 apartment units, and with 23,245 square feet of commercial space. This project is located off of Fayetteville Road, which is also known as 401, and can be further identified as 6201, 6301, and 6355 Fayetteville Road. The zoning is split, this parcel is split zone, some of the parcel is zone MFB conditional, and other parts CMX conditional. The current use is vacant. Give you some context to this project. The project received conditional zone approval through CZMP 2204 last year. It's a mix of CMX, RA, and R4 surroundings. The RA and R4 are residential uses. Water and sewer are readily available, and the project will also construct its portion of Vandora Springs Extension. There are a number of conditions of approval for the rezoning that I just mentioned. I have listed all those conditions for the multifamily portion and also the CMX portion of the site. If you would like me to go over those, I can. However, the site plan was reviewed against all the conditions of approval, and they have been met as well. Just listed the conditions. I will go over the architectural conditions for this project, though. For the multifamily apartments, no bottom siding shall be used. There should be cemented siding that shall vary in type and color, with brick and shakes, and board and baton, and stone accents as provided as features. Slab-on-grave foundations must have masonry extending all the way up to the ground, I mean, not, excuse me, from the ground, excuse me. A 12-inch overhang for all pitch roofs on the carriage units and apartment buildings. Windows that are not recessed must have trim on them, and the minimum garage size must be 12 by 24. The Town's comprehensive plan, I just wanted to make this note, that the zoning that I just talked about, the rezoning, was in place before the new comp plan was approved, so I just want to keep that in mind. In 2023, the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, this project area is not within any activity senior zones, however, it does fall within a neighborhood type... I'm going to say it right. Typology, which includes single-family detached homes, townhomes, apartments, and mixed-use and others. The site is called out to Level 2, which is an area to be strengthened. There were two neighborhood meetings for this project. There were forty-seven properties identified by staff, and the applicant mailed out notices by first-class mail. There was one meeting held on March 30th, and the second meeting was held on November 14 of 2023. There were two people in attendance at both meetings. The full meeting information was attached to the online version as well as your agenda packet. Let me pull this up. There are 12 apartment buildings, and three buildings will have 32 units in each building, five buildings will have 40 units, and six buildings, well, excuse me, and four buildings will have 60 units. There's one clubhouse, and there are 10 carriage house buildings on this site as well. Open space, they're required to have 4.09 acres of open space for this project, but they are proposing 18 and 0.09 acres. They're consistent with the required zoning conditions, as I mentioned before. A combination of probably maintained conservation and recreation space makes up this open-space area. The conservation area includes floodplain and conservation buffers and walk-in trails, and the recreation area includes pocket parks, multipurpose lawn, and a dog park, and also the clubhouse. This project is subject to storm water quality and quantity requirements. Quality requirements, water quality requirements are only for nitrogen-only, and the water quantity requirements are for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. This project also meets the requirements of the 100-year storm events, which was a condition of zoning condition. The wet retention ponds will satisfy all nitrogen and total suspended solids, also known as TSS, requirements, as well as water quantity requirements. The promo papers that are being proposed, they will have to be approved by DEQ Stormwater Design Minimums Criteria, and there will be an offset payment requirement for this project. And buffers. The requirements for existing vegetation and, excuse me, the requirements being met by existing vegetation and supplemental plant material, they're required to have a minimum coverage of 20% of tree coverage. 18.19% is being provided with existing plant material, and will be supplemented with new plants to meet that requirement. Street trees along all public roads will be provided every 40 feet as required, and perimeter buffers are 14, excuse me, 15 feet wide, type B for the north, and for the south and east buffers, they're 45 feet wide, type C. The site plan meets the proposed, excuse me, meets the UDO's requirements for light poles, the location in foot candles. Parking requirements for the residential requirements, 1.6 spaces for each unit is required, and for every additional space for every units. And for the commercial portion of the project, there is one space for every 225 square feet. They're required to have 1,163 spaces, they're proposing 1,229. Fire access and turn radius for emergency vehicles, we find that this plan meets that The site will be served by City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer. There's a 16-inch main that is just north of the site. This is the Georgia's Landing project that's north of the site, and there is an 8-inch water, excuse me, 8-inch sewer line that, I've said it wrong, it's the sewer line that's at Georgia's Landing, I'm sorry, and the water line is already running in front of the project area on Fayetteville Road. Transportation notes, as I mentioned before, this project will be building its portion of the Vandora Springs Extension, and this is shown to you in the purple area right here. And this project will also be required to make the improvements that Town of Garner and NC DOT have required this project to do. Solid box curb and gutter will also be along US 401 and on the Vandora Springs Extension Road. A TIA was completed and approved with associated rezoning case that was last, two years ago. This site does contain FEMA floodplains, and there is a 50-foot conservation buffer on both sides of the floodplain. In order for the site, excuse me, to develop within the environmentally sensitive areas, the governing authority will have to provide permits, and those permits will have to be shown to Town of Garner prior to issuance of any type of building permits. And there were no cultural resources identified on this site. And this is just some examples of the elevations that have been provided for this project. This with my red dot is, this is just an apartment building. This one right here is the carriage house building that I mentioned before. This is one of the commercial buildings. And this right here is the mixed-use building that has commercial below and then the residential on top. And this one is the clubhouse. After review of this project by TRC, staff finds that this project is consistent with all of the plans and policies, and can be approved so long as the following conditions are met. I want to make note that in your staff report, it listed 10 conditions. This one lists nine, because one of the conditions was to submit an annexation petition to the town. This project area has already been annexed, so that condition's already met, so that's kind of a condition. So the conditions of approval, prior to issuance of building permit, the lot must be law of record, proof of existing well being promptly moved that's on the site right now, proof that existing 30-foot CPN L easement has been abandoned, permit from a government agency to grant disturbance within environmentally sensitive areas, engineering inspection fees are paid to Town of Garner, the engineering department shall be in receipt of the nitrogen offset payment. All these will be done prior to issuing a building permit. The maintenance and the memorandum agreement and stormwater control maintenance plan must be recorded with, at the Wake County Regional Affairs Office, and this must be done prior to construction drawing approval. The construction drawings must be submitted to the engineering department prior, I mean, excuse me, following site plan approval, and the City of Raleigh requires them to provide construction drawings for public water, public sewer, and/or private sewer extensions. That is the end of staff's presentation. I'm here for questions, and the applicant is here too as well, and they also have a presentation too as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jones. I'm going to suggest that we hear from the applicant's team now, and then we'll see if council members have some questions after that. So thank you very much. Be on standby, we may have some more questions. And now we'll call on the applicant. If you would address, come to the podium, introduce yourself, and then your team, we're glad to hear what you have to say.
See, good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners. I'm a land use attorney based in Raleigh, but handle land use matters such as special use permits throughout Wake County. Here on behalf of Swift Creek Apartments LLC, the property owner, and we are here for, as Ms. Jones mentioned, a special use permit for 6201, 6301, and 6355 Fayetteville Road, commonly referred to as Swift Creek Apartments. I'm joined by our experts who will be testifying to the eight standards of approval, Marty Bizel and Gary Walston with B&amp;K Engineers. Marty and Gary helped prepare the site plan. Rhinald Stevenson with DRMP. Rhinald is a traffic engineer who prepared the TIA during the rezoning process. And Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals LLC. Rich performed a property value analysis that he will cover in just a few moments. So as mentioned, and I'll try to, you know, not be too repetitive based on what Ms. Jones said, but again, the nature of the request, Swift Creek Apartments LLC is property owner, requests a special use permit in order to develop up to 613 multifamily units on 40.91 acres on areas owned MFB CU, CMX CU, and again, located at 6201, 6301, and 6355 Fayetteville Road. This slide here shows the existing conditions. Again, the site is north of the Brookwood Drive intersection and south of Georgia's Landing Parkway. On the right-hand side, you see a Google Maps view, you can see the Buffalo Land Bowling Center to the south, and the Georgia's Landing subdivision to our north. Here is a street view from US 401. On the right-hand side, you can see the existing dirt path, which is a general approximation of where the Vandora Springs Road extension would be going. Again, this property is zoned a mix of CMX CU, that area closest to US 401, and MFB CU, the balance of the site shaded in orange. This rezoning was approved by a town council in June of last year, and this is the master plan that was associated with last year's zoning. Mixed-use and commercial development along 401 apartment buildings located in the interior of the site with two-story carriage houses that run along the site's northern, eastern, and southern perimeters. The site plan, as shown here, reflects that master plan. Uh, the site plan as shown here uh reflects that master plan that this council approved. Um, again, six hundred and thirteen apartment units, uh just over twenty-three thousand square feet of commercial space, uh twenty-four buildings, uh and and there's different types. We have mixed-use buildings, uh we have a restaurant brewery, a clubhouse, we have apartments uh and carriage houses. This is a zoomed-in view of that area close to US four oh one. You can see the mixed-use building, the L-shaped building there, as well as that brewery slash restaurant, uh to form sort of a pedestrian plaza. Uh, here's a view of the interior of the site where uh all of the uses are residential, uh but for the uh clubhouse, which is located uh in the uh the middle of the screen. And then finally, this uh southeast corner, uh where you can also see a majority of the proposed uh stormwater pond that again will be designed to treat the one-hundred-year flood event. These are building elevations of our uh mixed-use buildings, I'll I'll go through these fairly quickly. Uh, another view of that mixed-use building, uh elevations of the brewery restaurant, uh these are of the the clubhouse. Uh, this is one of the apartment building types. Here is another of those apartment building types. Uh, and then we have the two-story carriage house building elevations here. Uh, we also have a couple renderings that were not in the staff presentation that we thought you you may like to see. Uh, this is a view of the clubhouse and a couple of the apartment buildings. Here you can see again more apartment buildings with the clubhouse located in the distance uh in the center of the site. This is a view, uh another view of that uh brewery restaurant. Got jumpy. Um, here is a view of the brewery along with that L-shaped uh mixed-use building, and you can see uh a bit of that pedestrian plaza and meeting space there, uh more of that on the the backside of the the brewery, uh and then just a another standalone view of our mixed-use building. Uh, the Town of Garner has eight standards that the applicant uh must provide, uh competent expert testimony uh to show that we meet those standards. Um, just very quickly, first, the proposed use will not endanger the public safety. Second, the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. Three, if completed as proposed, the development will comply with all requirements of this ordinance. Four, the proposed use is consistent with the town's adopted transportation plans, other relevant adopted plans and policies, and the stated purpose and intent of this U D O. Uh, the fact that the use is permitted under certain circumstances creates a rebuttable presumption that the proposed use is in harmony with the U D O. Number five, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses in proximate neighborhood in terms of building scale, site design, buffering and screening, operating characteristics, uh and other external impacts. Uh, number six, any ad, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts on the natural environment. Number seven, the public safety, transportation, and utility services uh will be available to serve both the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. And finally, number eight, adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. We will go through all eight of those. Uh, we will try to be as efficient with our time as possible, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we establish a clear, a clear record uh that we are meeting each of those eight standards. Uh, first standard, again, the proposed use will not endanger the public safety. Uh, I'm going to ask um Ryneal Stevenson and Marty Bizel uh up to the podium to discuss uh those factors with respect to traffic and transportation, and then stormwater and environmental protection. And uh Ryneal and Marty, if you could please just state your credentials before you begin. Thank you.
Um, good evening. Ryneal Stevenson with um D R M P. I am a um registered professional engineer um in the state of North Carolina, and I, my company have prepared um hundreds of traffic impact studies for uh developments um all across the state and uh in Garner.
Good evening. My name is Marty Bizel. Uh, I'm a registered professional engineer with Bass Nixon and Kennedy um consulting engineers. We're a fifty-five-year-old company uh in Raleigh. Um, as I said, I'm a, I have a bachelor's degree from North Carolina State University. Uh, licensed engineer in North Carolina, I'm a certified professional in erosion and sediment control, and a certified stormwater control measure inspector uh for the state of North Carolina.
So again, um Ryneal Stevenson, I'm gonna to talk to you a little bit about the uh traffic and transportation um conditions um relative to this this request. Um, as you've heard, the project does comply with the uh town's transportation plan, uh with the construction of Vandora Springs Road uh through the site. Again, that'll be designed according to town uh town requirements for the roadway. Um, uh, a traffic impact analysis was done for uh this project to look at traffic impacts, access, and any improvements that would be required. That uh traffic study was reviewed and approved by town and N C D O T. Um, there were some improvements associated with that traffic impact analysis. Those improvements relate to uh restrictions of movements along uh four oh one, uh to uh limit left-turn movements from any side streets, and there's uh turn lanes associated with movements going into the uh site access where the Vandora Springs Road Extension project. Um, and the um, the, there's an emergency vehicle access that is separate from the Vandora Springs Road Extension. That is shown as the condition of the of the project um that we can uh look at here sort of at the top of the page. There is a, there is a connection there, you can see, I don't know if this shows uh on your screen, but at near the top of the page, there is a connection there that can be utilized for emergency vehicle access uh if needed. But you can see along the southern part of the page there, that is the um Vandora Springs Road Extension, and you can see some of the channelization, you saw it from the photo as well, the concrete islands out on US four oh one that limits movements uh into and from uh the Vandora Springs Road Extension. So with, you know, with these improvements uh that are shown and have been identified, the site is not going to have a significant um negative impact on the transportation infrastructure and will not have a a significant impact on the or endanger the uh public health and safety of the transportation network.
And touching touching on the stormwater and environmental protection uh concerns, I just want to make four, four points. Um, number one being that none of the uh parking buildings or streets will be located within the uh hundred-year flood plain. Uh, if you're familiar with the area, Swift Creek bounds us to the south, uh and a portion of the flood plain does get onto the property, but we're staying completely out of that uh by taking the previously uh location uh that you may have seen years back on Vandora Springs Extension. We are pulling that completely outside of the hundred-year flood plain. We've talked a little bit about the condition that's been added about the hundred-year storm. We will attenuate and detain the hundred-year storm by a a couple of different methods, um one being our stormwater wet pond that would be on our southeast corner of our site, and also through the use of our permeable pavers, there's a a storage component included in that that we will actually um be providing. Uh, our impervious area will not exceed thirty percent, uh and our nitrogen export will be within the state limits, um as mentioned earlier as well.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Ryneal. And um just to to touch on uh Mr. Bizel's point, uh everywhere in blue here, light blue or dark blue, those are locations of permeable pavers. They're found throughout the entirety of this site. Um, very extensive set of permeable pavers to keep that impervious uh as low as we possibly can. Uh, and so for the reasons that Mr. Stevenson mentioned with the limited uh term movements from Vandora Springs onto US four oh one, the inclusion of an emergency vehicle access directly onto US four oh one in the case of an emergency, um the traffic and transportation impacts will not uh substantially endanger uh public safety. Uh, and with regard to our environmental mitigation, um because we are designing a stormwater pond to the hundred-year flood event, and because of the extensive amount of permeable pavers that we're using to reduce our impervious surface, uh we do not expect any uh substantial uh impacts to the natural environment as well. The second uh standard of approval, the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. I'm gonna have uh Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals LLC come up and uh give an overview of his property value analysis, and Rich, again, just state your qualifications. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Rich Kirkland, Kirkland Appraisals. Um, I'm a state-certified general appraiser in North Carolina, been working the triangle area for about twenty-eight years. Um, I'm certified in North Carolina and about thirteen other states. We do impact analysis in a number of locations. Um, we've been doing impact analysis for over twenty years, um so it's a regular part of our um business model. Um, I'm also an M A I, which is a a national designation put out through the appraisal institute just for advanced studies, peer review process to get that additional training. Um, the impact analysis I did here, really looking at the adjoining properties, there was only three um adjoining residential homes that we considered to be the ones that we needed to be most concerned with. We looked at those, we measured how close the apartment building's going to get to those, um and then we compared them to similar apartment buildings in and around Garner. So, we looked at similar uh projects, they're listed in the report, but we looked at six other apartment complexes. And actually, the distance from home to um apartment buildings are actually much further at this location than the other six examples we looked at. Most of them range from a hundred twenty to about a hundred and eighty feet when you look, measure distance from home to panel or home to building. But um i- i- at this location, the closest home I found was about two hundred and eighty feet. So, there's a much greater separation, there's landscaping buffering, and even with the apartment buildings we looked at, where we looked at those closer locations, we did a paired sales analysis, looking at sales of homes next to existing apartments, and we, again, at distances around closer to a hundred feet, we were finding no impacts on property values. So, again, we have much greater separation than that. So, it's my professional opinion that this project as proposed will not injure the adjoining property values. I have to go into greater detail or answer any questions if you need it.
Uh, these next slides here are are some of those, uh some of that more detail that that we can touch on if if necessary. Uh, but the analysis summary that Rich provided, the proposed development and or use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property. The third standard of approval, if completed as proposed, the development will comply with all requirements of this ordinance. Uh, we are not seeking um any other variances or any other quasi-judicial relief from this council uh for any other U D O standards. Um, the the sole purpose for coming before you for the special use permit is to go above that two hundred dwelling unit limit as um laid out in the U D O. I did want to point out again, and not to be repetitive, but we are within the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, and the plan identifies this site as new suburban, meaning we could not exceed thirty percent impervious surface uh on the site. And again, um, the Swift Creek Land Management Plan is meant to limit impervious surface, not meant to limit density or types of uses. Uh, and as Mr. Bizel demonstrated uh just a few moments ago, with the inclusion of all of those permeable pavers, we are able to be under that thirty percent impervious surface limit. And again, you can see those locations of those permeable pavers uh there as well. Um, the fourth standard of approval is the proposed use is consistent with the town's plans and policies. Um, I've listed five of those plans and policies here, and I'll I'll go over them very briefly. Uh, first, we are consistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. We're consistent with the neighborhood's character typology. Uh, that designation recommends multiple housing types within a development, and it also recommends uh some ancillary commercial uses to serve those residences. Um, the Swift Creek Apartments has three distinct housing types. We have a true mixed-use product with apartments over commercial. We have your uh maybe more common uh pure apartment building, uh and we also have the two-story carriage houses. So, we are providing a a range of housing types and and a range of options for people uh who want to live here. We're also including ground floor retail within the mixed-use building, as well as a standalone brewery and restaurant uh for not only the residents uh and guests of this site, but of the surrounding community, uh which we think will be a very successful addition. Secondly, we are consistent with the Garner Transportation Plan. Uh, Mr. Stevenson laid out our compliance with the required improvements of US four oh one, uh as well as our uh construction and extension of Vandora Springs Road, uh where we will stub to the eastern boundary line. Uh, the zoning conditions also required us to dedicate a transit easement along Vandora Springs uh for uh future bus services, uh when the time is appropriate for that. So, um, by those three improvements and dedications, we are consistent with the town's transportation plan. We're consistent with the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. Uh, just to say it one more time, we are designing the site to meet the thirty percent impervious surface limit, and we are designing a stormwater pond to treat the hundred-year flood event. We are consistent with the town's recreation, greenways, and cultural resources master plan. Our zoning conditions also require two connections, that should say proposed, not the existing. Um, there is a proposed Swift Creek Greenway Corridor uh running along Swift Creek and south of our development. As part of the rezoning application, we offered a zoning condition to dedicate two easements uh that would connect that corridor to our development. Those are shown on our site plan, and we are uh consistent with the uh cultural resources plan. We've also included a path along the stormwater pond, another condition of approval uh from that rezoning. And lastly, um, the proposed use is permitted in the multifamily B zoning district, uh which uh creates a rebuttable presumption that the proposed use is in harmony with the intent of the U D O. The fifth standard of approval, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and the proximate neighborhood. A few examples listed here, uh use compatibility. The development is bordered by vacant property to the north, south, and west, with three single-family homes to the east. The property to the north of us is also zoned C M X. Um, the way that this site has been laid out by the applicant creates that harmony between four oh, uh highway four oh one and the single-family homes uh to our east. So, if you start on four oh one, we have the mixed-use buildings, and we have the commercial uses. As you move interior to the site, we have the pure apartment buildings. And then on the perimeter, and especially um as a buffer to those single-family homes along Malibu Drive, we have the two-story carriage houses. So, you create sort of a gentle leveling up of design intensity and and housing types as you make your way from those houses up to US four oh one. Um, we also have zoning conditions that require quality building materials. Uh, Ms. Jones went over those in her presentation, so I won't recite those again. Um, all the apartment buildings have pitched roofs, uh no flat roof apartments uh here on on this plan, and all of those apartments have twelve-inch overhangs, again, to mimic the style of development of those uh adjacent single-family homes. The hours of operation for trash services is limited to hours between eight A M and five P M uh to prevent, you know, that dumping, that picking up of garbage at inconvenient times, uh both for our our residents as well as uh the folks that live on Malibu Drive. Uh, and lastly, the development is providing a hundred and fifty percent of the required landscaping around all dumpster and compaction areas, again, just to better uh shield um those sorts of ancillary features from uh the residents. Uh, one thing I'll also note, um, there is again a forty-five-foot vegetated type C buffer uh from our site to the single-family homes on Malibu Drive. Again, that's where we've, the closest homes to those are the carriage houses. Those are no more, or excuse me, no less than ninety-five feet away from those single-family lots. Uh, so providing a lot of space, a lot of buffering, uh and again, trying to limit the um any potential negative impacts uh to those homes as best we can. The sixth standard of approval, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts on the natural environment. Uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Bizel just to come back up, talk about our uh landscaping, our site layout, and again, those uh intersection improvements uh that were studied in the T I A.
Now, again, uh-
Again, Ronald Stevenson. And what I'll say about the transportation mitigation is, as I testified earlier, the traffic study did identify some road improvements that would be necessary for this development, and the development will be completing those road improvements. And the purpose of those improvements is to mitigate any impact the development has. So the development will be mitigating any transportation impacts, including the emergency vehicle access that we touched on earlier as well. That will be provided to have a secondary point of access if needed for emergency vehicles.
Speaking to the landscape buffers as well as the environmental protection, on the storm, the landscape buffers that have, you've actually seen, and we've had some information on, there's actually a 25-foot street yard along our property frontage, along Highway 401. To our north is a 15-foot buffer along that property line. And then to our, if you will, our eastern property line, adjacent to the Malibu Drive, it's actually 45 feet and extends down to our southern property line, where it's, along that is also a 45-foot buffer. We will be, if those natural areas do not meet this town's landscape requirements, we will supplement those natural areas to, so they do meet the town's landscape requirements. But the primary point there being that we will try our best to retain existing vegetation where possible. We're also committed to adding 55 trees in our tree save areas. Our total tree save area is 20%, which is actually the town's requirement. But that added to our additional open space. We have approximately 44% of the site will be in open space. We've touched, again, on the stormwater and as far as mitigating the impact that the stormwater could possibly have. As far as a water quality impact, we will be treating the 85% TSS down to state requirements. Our nitrogen exports will be at or below the state requirements. And also, our runoff mitigation, we, the town's typical requirement is the 210 and 25-year storm. We are adding the 100-year storm. So we will be basically detaining the post-development runoff back to pre-development runoff up to the 100-year storm.
Thank you both. Item number seven, standard number seven, the public safety, transportation, and utility facilities and services will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. Transportation capacity, I'll have Mr. Stevenson come back up and speak to his expertise on the transportation capacity.
Again, thank you. So the transportation capacity is what we look at with the traffic impact analysis report, and the intersections and roadways were studied to determine the capacity of the surrounding roads and intersections. And as I said earlier, improvements were identified to improve that capacity and level of service. And so with those improvements that were identified as part of the traffic impact study, there is sufficient capacity for this development, for the transportation network.
Thank you. And then I'll have Mr. Bizel come up and speak to the utility sufficiency.
Regarding the water and sewer utilities, we have been in several conversations with the city of Raleigh. And as you mentioned, as has been mentioned before, there's a 16-inch water line in US 401 that we will be connecting to. Regarding our sewer, we will be constructing a pump station on our site that will not only serve our site, but ultimately will serve other upstream properties or developments that will be gravity flowing down to our development. So the goal is that we would have more of a regional-type pump station and take off possibly the one in Georgia's Landing ultimately. So the city of Raleigh is very excited about what we've got proposed, that sums up the water and sewer requirements.
The last standard of approval, adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. This will be a quick one. There will be a property management group that will be responsible for maintaining all of the open space, all of the play yards, as well as all of the stormwater facilities. So adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. Just a summary, Swift Creek Apartments meets the special use permit standards of approval. The development is designed to mitigate traffic, environmental, and adjacent use impacts, and approval of this special use permit is reasonable and in the public interest. We appreciate your patience as we went through all of that information. Happy to answer any questions that you all have, and we appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, and thank you, Ms. Jones. At this point, I'll ask council members who wish to ask any questions so far. Any questions? Mr. Singleton.
I have several. I know the capacity on 401 is stated it can handle the traffic, but what is the average day of trips added by a 613-unit facility? We just did one with 950, and I know what that is, so I'm assuming this is 2/3 of it.
Say that one more time, the 950?
We just did one for 950. Now, how many trips that created? I'm assuming this is going to be 2/3 of that roughly.
Yeah, probably close. Yeah. It's probably close. It's the total number, again, just so I don't tell you something incorrect, is about 5,000 trips a day. And that includes the commercial area as well.
2/3, okay. All right, just wanted that for the record, how many trips a day. It's in their capacity out there, but I just wanted to have that number out there. Thank you for that. I got a question about, well, you might answer this one or someone else. Curiosity question, if this project is passed. It says Vandora Springs Road on there. Are we going to call this Vandora Springs Road and not be connected for 25 or 30 or 40 years? Are we going to let people get on Google and try to find out where they are, and they get to the end of Vandora Springs and Old Stage and say, "Where am I at?" Or are we going to call it another name? I mean, I'm just thinking common sense. I mean, we, when we did Timber Drive, that part of Timber Drive was Timber Drive East to separate it. That connected, they no telling if we'll ever see this road connected. So do we need to call it that, or should we call it something else? So people think this out.
Mr. Singleton, I would, I would just offer that staff can take your comments back and and work with the DOT as well as Campo, just to see if there's any best practices that we should be considering when we make that final call.
Okay. All right, thank you. I have a question on the, specifically on the site plan, and looking at that. You have a play area of 12,600 feet, 11 by 1, excuse me, not 11, 70 by 180, 12,600 square feet. That's kind of puny for 600 units, isn't it? I mean, that's 20 square feet if you had one person each unit, that's 5 foot by 4 wearing a little box. The reason I bring this up is puny, is last week after our meeting, I walked out there and Mr. Vance and Mr. Ellingson were talking in the parking lot, I was getting to my car, and there were two kids playing in the stormwater pond in front of town hall with a plastic bat and plastic ball, because they had nowhere else to play. And they're assuming their mom went out there. And Mr. Vance can confirm this, because there's no place to play. And I'm thinking that's bigger than 5 foot, 20 square feet per person. So as I look at this, and all, and there's some shared green, I get all that, but y'all know, if you seen our meetings, I hammer on this, you ought to get rid of building 10 and make it all that a play area. But that's just Gray's opinion, and that won't happen, but that's a pretty puny play area.
My name is Gary Wallston. I'm a landscape architect with Bass, Nixon, Kennedy. I've been practicing in this area for almost 40 years this year. Registered in the state of North Carolina as a professional landscape architect. I worked on the amenity areas for the site, and I know that one play area doesn't, on the surface of it, doesn't look like a lot, but we also have a pocket park, we have a dog park, we have a fairly large common open space area in the mixed-use development, and we have probably about 8,000 square feet of pool deck and play area around a swimming pool.
But you can't play baseball and soccer and do whatever on the deck in the pool. And I sure as heck hope they ain't playing in the dog park. So eliminates all that. And a pocket park is just about worth nothing. So I'm, listen, I've mentioned this, and I missed every one, I'm going to do it on the next one we got tonight. That's puny. I'm sorry, that's pitiful. 600 units, they got 5, 20 square feet if you did one person each way, that's 5 foot by 4, just think of that. I go back to the kids last week, playing on the stormwater pond in front of town hall because they had no other place to go. I'll stop, I've done my preaching, it's not on your eight conditions, and that's pitiful. Excuse me.
Acknowledged. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kenyon Burnham. I'm one of the principals with KDM Development, have been doing real estate development in the Raleigh-Durham area for quite some time, and probably close to about $1 billion in development experience under my belt to this stage. I will add, Councilman Singleton, one of the items that probably isn't called out on the site plan, but will be coming to the area is the Raleigh Greenway Trail that'll be connecting along the southern portion of the property. And a large part of the reason we were so enthusiastic about this particular development was our ability to connect in with that, as that Greenway Trail's built out in there. We actually believe in, on our end internally, that it is very important that our residents have access to outdoor recreational areas, whether that's a pocket park, a dog park, a play area, or a Greenway Trail in this particular case. And again, something that we have been coordinating with Wake County on and City of Raleigh as they make that extension. It is something that's important to us as well, and certainly noting your concerns there, and, you know, we do, we do understand where you're coming from. But again, we do have some significant elements of, I think, access to outdoor open space where we can provide them on this site.
I appreciate you doing that and mentioning that, but it's a long way from there to walk to Lake Benson Park and the White Deer Park, and it's a long way to Lake Wheeler. But anyway, I just, when you talk about open space, you either have it out there, you don't. So anyway, that's one of my criticisms. I'll stop for now, I'm sure others may have questions or comments.
A question in reference to the previous site plan, and how different is the density for this site plan versus the one that came before this, this current site plan versus the one that came before this one? Does the site plan that was provided last year?
Yeah, Councilmember Vance, are you, are you just asking if the plan that's shown here is consistent with the master plan that was approved? Or are you talking about a wholly separate development that?
The master plan that was approved.
Yeah, and I've got, so you can see the, this is the master plan that was attached to our rezoning application in June of last year. And then here you can see the site plan that has been submitted to the town. And density-wise, development intensity-wise, this is compliant with our master plan.
Okay. If there's no other questions from council at this moment, I'm going to ask if there are any individuals who have signed up to speak on this topic tonight.
Yes, James Anthony, and he was sworn in by the town clerk.
Mr. Anthony, please approach, introduce yourself with your name and your address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Jim Anthony, and James I. Anthony Jr. Legally. I live at 924 Vance Street in Raleigh, and I was last before this board, different group of people, probably 2012, a long time ago. I've owned this land since I bought it from the notorious Bill Henderson, who assembled this property along with a lot of others in this area many, many years ago, probably 2000, before 2000. So I'm the guy who had the last plan approved here. And on this particular site, our plan was four apartments, but we didn't ever, we never actually plotted it out. We just had a road network that led back to the rest of the project. And, and of course, this is a really critical building block to making everything else happen in the rest of our project. We still own approximately 120 conservation buffer acres, which we intend to make available to the town of Garner for public park space in conjunction with our development planning. Number two, we have either ownership of or control of approximately 107 acres of developable land adjacent to the other side of the railway. And then there's a piece between us owned by Ronnie Smith, which is about 17 acres of buildable land after you deduct the flood area. So I'm here to express support for the project, and also to say that there are a few things that I wanted to publicly get on record. If you look at that site plan, you'll notice that the road bends away from the original easement area, where, which is the recorded public access easement that serves through the tracks into the back of the property. So that is going to have to be relocated. And my question for staff, really, is does that impact how this site plan gets approved? Or is it just an administrative thing that can be adjusted later? Because we have spoken with our development team at KDM about relocating it to its proper position, and they're, they realize that they're going to need to do that, but I'm a little concerned about approving a site plan that doesn't have it in the right place. Any comment on that?
This is where it is now? Well, but now?
No. It's where, that's where it's proposed.
Supposed to go. And this is where the easement is?
Correct. Along the border, correct.
So at some point, will this be going to get revised, plat, vacating this easement or right of way, and plat it where it's being proposed now?
That, that works for us as long as it matches up where it has to be in the next parcel, and then comes through to our land. We can't, we cannot relocate that because there's multiple parcels that are served by that roadway, and they have to be capable of being served with that roadway, not something different. Am I making sense?
My parcel's back here? I'm going to have to get some more information from you and give you some more feedback on that, because I don't, I can't.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that we got that clarified. And, and then with respect to what we hope to bring to you someday in the near future is a project with most likely all single-family homes to be constructed on the, on the balance of the land that we control. And there is some part, property we don't control, but we're thinking that the size of that development towards the back could be another 400 to 500 homes on 106 acres. And we just want to make certain that the infrastructure that we get built on 401 is capable of handling that additional development. Because I do agree with Mr. Singleton that the reality is that Vandora Springs Road is not going to get connected across that swamp. It's just going to be too expensive for anybody to ever do it. And it probably does make sense to have a different road name. But nevertheless, there is another 150 acres, including the tract at the back of our acreage, which will extend the road, you know, significantly ways beyond where it is today. So those are my comments.
Mr. Anthony, a question. Mr. Anthony, you said you heard, you thought it was 2012 when we approved the plan. I can remember, did we approve a plan on the other side of the railroad too? Was it, it was approved with?
Yes.
It looked different than this, much different than this, but it was approved with the railroad crossing, was it?
Yes. Correct. And it's, it's, it's expired now, obviously, so we've got to start all over.
I was just curious, I seem like I remember us talking, and you said there was some land that you don't own, but it's kind of in the middle there, so that's why the road had to go so far down or something?
Yes. So the Ronnie Smith parcel, which is approximately 22 acres adjacent to us, is, that's it. It's in, it's in pink, and it's got the arrow on it. It's in, it's in pink and it's got the arrow on it right now, that's it.
I seem to think you had to cross, you mentioned back then crossing over the property, then crossing the railroad, okay.
And you can see in that particular aerial, colored though it be, the path of the road that lies in the actual easement space. That is the easement that serves all those parcels. And you can't just arbitrarily move that without everybody else's permission, right? So.
And was that, and that road, that was there when you purchased the land? Or some of that road had been put in before you purchased the land?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I remember the previous project quite well, because we extended the CUP like three or four times, as you remember. Okay, thank you for your information.
Anything else? Thank you.
Just as a rebuttal to those comments, and we certainly appreciate Mr. Anthony's support. I don't believe he qualified himself as a transportation engineer, so we would ask that any testimony as to the transportation network, the future and exact alignment of Vandora Springs Road be disregarded by this town council. That's all gonna be worked out at construction drawings with NC DOT and the Town of Garner. And I will just reiterate that the town has determined that this plan as shown meets the intent and the goals of Garner's transportation plan. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other information from our planning staff that we'd like to hear about? Or you think we should know about this particular issue, the connectivity to future land? Is that something we need to be thinking about tonight?
As staff, we're not aware of anything else that should be additionally considered. And fortunately, we don't have anyone from the engineering department here tonight. But as was noted, it is compliant with, there may be some private issues that do have to be worked out, but I would think that we should be able to work those kind of things out in the construction document process as was noted.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful information, okay. And again, I'm gonna ask, is there anyone else signed up to speak tonight on this issue?
No, but I would ask that council accept the staff report into the case record as evidence, unless any objection is raised by any party to the case.
Okay, at this point then, I'm gonna close the public hearing. We can have more discussion among the council members, but the official public hearing is closed. And with that, I'll ask if there's a council member who wants to make a motion, then we can have some more discussion if you like. But is there a motion on, on the floor related to approval of this development?
I move that, I find the application SUP SP 2302 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 4.7.4.9. Therefore, I move the town council approve SUP SP 2303 Swift Creek Apartments with the 10-site, nine?
Nine.
Nine, nine-site specific conditions recommended by the TRC to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Vance, is there a second to that motion?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Matthews gives a second, and I'm going to ask the council members present here if you are in favor of this motion and issuing the special use permit. I'm going to ask you to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Here are three ayes. Anyone opposed by saying nay?
Nay.
There's one nay. It looks that the motion passes three to one. And, and that's, that concludes this part of the, the issue here tonight. Thank you very much for all the information that's brought forward to us. We do want to continue to work on this project, make sure we're interfacing correctly with our neighbors. It's an ongoing project, it's a huge project, a huge impact. Thank you very much for continuing to work with our planning staff, with your neighbors, and everybody involved to get the best possible result that we can do. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, and under the new and old business category, we have a Tier Two conditional rezoning of Wall Store Road project. And I'm, I'm gonna ask Ms. Joseph to give us the staff report on this and, and the background. Even though this is not a public hearing, we're still going to get all the input that we can to make a good decision.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members in public. It's good to be before you this evening. I will be presenting the rezoning case for Wall Store Road, also known as CZMP 2302. This rezoning request is a Tier Two rezoning. It is accompanied by a master plan. The applicant is Capital Partners of NC LLC and has petitioned the rezoning on behalf of the owner Michael Braxton Poole Sr. and Cam Holdings LLC. This request is, excuse me, request consists of 8.95 acres. It is, the, the request asks to rezone the property from rural agriculture and MFB conditional to multifamily B conditional for the development of a maximum of 60 townhomes. This site is located just south on the south side of Wall Store Road, west of Rock Quarry Road. So you have Wall Store Road here, and to the west, Rock Quarry Road. Zoning conditions have been presented and restricts a range of uses, and also has added commitments that are above and beyond what the Unified Development Ordinance requires. If you recall, at the public hearing on March 5th, there was discussion about what is happening in this area, particularly what is happening with the City of Raleigh and what they plan for the area. So we have included a slide that highlights some of the activities that are happening in, in relation to the City of Raleigh. So there is considerable growth and development activity in this area and adjacent to the portions of the City of Raleigh zoning jurisdiction. So Raleigh's jurisdiction is on the opposite side of Rock Quarry Road from Garner's, and also on the northern side of Wall Store Road. So the City of Raleigh is directing retail and service commercial, particularly to the eastern quadrant of Whitfield Road and Rock Quarry Road. And current developments are limiting the retail service possibilities in the north quadrant and to the southwest. And there is roughly three-fourths of a mile between Raleigh's center of retail service activity and Garner's Community Activity Center. So again, this proposal is requesting multifamily B conditional. The applicant has narrowed the possible uses to two out of 18. The multifamily B district has a more structure, structures are more urban in character, and are located closer to the street than in the MFA district, with parking generally in the rear. Multifamily developments in this district generally are clustered around active areas and allow people to live closer to places where they work and play. And some non-residential or mixed-use structures are also, also may occur in this district. So since the hearing, and also since the Planning Commission reviewed this case in May, there have been a few changes to the master plan. The applicant has added a playground to their open space area. They have, at the request of an adjacent property owner, they have included fencing, which will be subject to the Unified Development Ordinance. And they also have agreed to further enhance landscaping along the, the new collector road to the west of the property, and also on the, the southern collector road here. So this image is the master plan in context. It gives you an, an idea of the site, as well as what is happening in this, the, the nearby area. This development here is Burnett Farms. In this proposal, it's just under nine acres with a maximum of 60 townhouses. Point eight-seven acres of open space is required, and 25% of that open space must be active. Combination of conservation and recreation space and conservation. You have the riparian buffer areas and the pond, and the pond will remain filled. They will not drain and close the pond. At the Planning Commission meeting, there were several questions and comments. They consisted primarily of what the developer's responsibility will be for the improvements to the collector road on the eastern boundary. They asked for clarification of the connectivity to the existing greenways and trails with adjacent developments. They commented that they would like to see more enhanced landscaping. And there was a question, again, of the overall plan for development in the area. And will it be more piecemeal along Wall Store Road? So staff has reviewed this request against the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And so just a little background on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and what it envisions for this area. The framework, it is not within an activity center. The character typology is mixed-use, and the area is a Level 4A with transformation with low-rise buildings as the prevailing height. In staff's analysis, there were 13 growth framework criteria that were evaluated. Seven were strongly consistent, four modestly consistent, one split, and one modestly inconsistent. After the Planning Commission's meeting and recommendations, the applicant, again, they added a playground, open space feature, and so that removed the strong non-consistent rating. As the land use and community character was analyzed, there were 27 criteria that were determined to be applicable or possible to be meaningfully addressed. There is a modest lean towards consistency due to the minor changes and the additional details. Again, that further ring of the enhanced street frontages with landscaping, the use of open space, creating a stronger focal point, and proffering those additional conditions. Overall, with the adjustments made in response to the Planning Commission and discussion in this evaluation tool, staff feels that there is an overall finding of consistency. At the Planning Commission, they adopted a statement of consistency and found that in the absence of any strong non-supporting plan criteria and a modest level of consistency, that they would recommend, that they found that the, the request is consistent with the town's adopted land use plans. And they chose the consistent and recommend approval option that you see on the screen here. Their motion was to recommend approval of case number CZMP 2302 with the condition to add the enhanced landscaping along the major frontages on the eastern and southern collector roads to match the enhancement along Wall Store Road. And the vote was unanimous. The motion was made by Planning Commissioner Mr. Volin, and seconded by Commissioner Hodges. Tonight, as the council, as you all review this case, you will look at the reasonableness of this and the merits of this rezoning request. Just in summary, is it compatible with the present zoning and conforming uses of nearby property? Suitability of the subject property for use is permitted by the current versus the proposed district? Whether the proposed change tends to improve the balance of uses or meets a specific demand in the town? The availability of sewer, water, transportation infrastructure, stormwater facilities, and other necessary infrastructure generally suitable and adequate for the proposed use? And preservation of key features of the natural environment? On the screen, you have a draft motion for you all to consider this evening. And I can read it if you would like, but if not, I can move on. Again, you have the master plan, the proposal before you. The applicant is here this evening to answer any questions and to discuss some of the conditions that they have added since the hearing and the Planning Commission's meeting. And I'll also be on standby to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much, Ms. Joseph, and we would like to hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Beth Blackman, Timm's Group, 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102, Raleigh. I really only actually have one slide that highlighted the changes that we made and that Ms. Joseph also pointed those out. After our conversation with Planning Commission, they did recommend enhanced landscaping. You'll see that we have the, the pink trees along Wall Store Road that represents enhanced landscaping there with some understory trees, that's a written commitment. So we have agreed to add that along the west side of the north-south collector, and then along both sides of the major local street along the south of the property. The reason I just said the west side of the north-south collector is because those trees would have to go on to Mr. Poole's property, because street trees go outside of the right-of-way. And so we are not, I'm not committing him to having additional landscaping on his side, but he has actually requested a fence, and so we have added that commitment, meeting UDO standards for where the fence needs to go as far as setbacks and height requirements for there, for there, excuse me. And then we also have committed to adding a playground in our open space area. This would be shared with Burnett Farms, as we discussed in previous meetings. This will be a shared HOA, and so Burnett Farms did not have an actual playground structure proposed. So this would give the entire neighborhood a playground structure as well. So I am available, as well as the developer and the traffic engineer, if anybody has any questions for us this evening.
Thank you, what questions do we have from council?
I've just got one, I'm thinking of answering it, from the wall.
I've just got one, I'm thinking of that, so, from the Wall Store Road in Burnett Farms. That road is gonna be continually from Wall Store all the way down to Auburn Nightdale entrance.
That, that is correct, yes. It will be continuous from Wall Store all the way to Auburn Nightdale Road. Um, the part that we discussed at planning commission, the other side of the road is when a full road will be built on Burnett Farms. The full road, when you think about pavement and curb and gutter, will be built on our portion. I don't know a hundred percent, like, what the town wants to see as far as sidewalk the other side. I think that would probably be built, but I didn't commit the street trees because they would be outside of the right-of-way. Um, so that part might be a little different, but the full road will be built, yes.
Yes, Ms. Blackman, I missed the meeting on the Burnett Farms. How many units are in there or approved in that?
Ninety-eight town homes?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five townhomes and three hundred and forty-eight apartments.
Sixty-five hundred, that's okay. All right, thank you. One playground for five hundred units.
Well, and they have other amenities in the Burnett Farms neighborhood as well.
Questions? Okay, uh, well, I, I do have one question, and I, I think Ms. Joseph mentioned it from the planning commission, related to the Wall Store Road area, the other parcels, uh, is that a piecemeal kind of a addition and evolution, or is there more of a comprehensive plan up there?
Well, so I can tell you my answer that I gave to planning commission is obviously we only can develop the parcels that are brought to us by property owners or developers. So we have no plans for any additional property on Wall Store Road. Um, in the future, I think you have several pieces that are controlled by one property owner or similar family members. So there is possibility to get some larger tracts together, but, um, you know, we can only work with what we're given to work with at the time.
That's all, that's all that's on the table right now.
Correct.
Likewise, a little clarification on the major local fifty-five-foot public, um, road there, uh, does that connect to anything?
It, it does not at this time connect to anything, but it will be a sub-street, uh, to the western property line. And then when the Wall property that is to the west develops, then it would be extended through their property.
And likewise, the public greenway trail in the dotted line there, does that connect to the next neighbor in that direction?
It, it does not currently because there is a, um, a gap where it crosses over Mr. Wall's property, and then it picks back up. In Auburn Village, there is actually publicly dedicated easement there for Greenway. Um, so those two points will not connect to each other, uh, at this time, but when Mr. Wall's property does develop, when or if it develops, then that piece would be connected at that time.
And it, property would allow you to, to connect?
Correct. It does, the Greenway will connect to the east across the Burnett Farms property. Similar there, it will stop and then won't go all the way to Rock Quarry Road until the property on the east side of that develops.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See, I, I know this is not a public hearing, but did anyone sign up or express an interest in speaking at this point?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, very, very good. Again, this particular project has been, uh, by this council. It got referred to the planning commission, uh, who returned it with a, a favorable report, a recommendation to approve. So I'll ask our council members, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance to approve this, uh, development?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section Three of the staff report as their own. I further move that a town council adopt ordinance number 2024-52569 approving rezoning CZMP 23 dash zero-two as the request is reasonable in the public interest because the proposed district is compatible with present zoning, conforming uses on nearby property, and with the character of the neighborhood.
Motion's made by Councilman Matthews to, to approve and adopt the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. Uh, I will call for a vote here.
Discussion.
Okay, let's have some more discussion.
The proposed rezoning is, um, multifamily B, which states that these developments are clustered around active areas where people live closer to places where they can work and play. I don't know where the heck they can play because there's not enough room to play. Secondly, this is just about as a good example of ramming cram if I've ever seen. If you see the townhomes, there's nothing there but townhomes. You can drive up and down the street and see nothing but townhomes, crammed together, sixty of them in a, in eight acres of land. Um, we're gonna learn something when we have our work session issued, uh, later this month about values. Townhomes are not break-even values. They're all even, brand-new ones that were just built in April. I got the tax value assessed, and they're not winners. And we're gonna have to make some strong decisions about turning down townhome projects. They are not what we need to be approving because we're gonna keep getting eight-and-a-half cent tax rate requests in the staff to cover the cost of services, which is there's a gap. And we have got to pay attention to that. And again, this is a ram and cram project, and I'm not voting for it. It's got three votes. I'm sure it'll pass like they always do. But we have got to start paying attention to the business of assessed values because all we're doing is approving things that somebody else has got to cover to cover the cost. Eight-and-a-half cent here, eight-and-a-half cent there. That's what the staff's gonna keep bringing to councils because you gotta cover the cost of services. I've had my fill and say of it.
Say something, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to allude to that there are already three votes is, is something that should not be stated. And to say that, uh, your assessment of the townhomes based, based upon your assessment and covering and, and being able to sustain and, and to reference to the tax value, that's something that is yet to be determined and needs to be more clearly anal, clearly, clearly analyzed. And to make that statement now, uh, can be considered misleading because we have not gone through the proper analysis to look at how all of this is gonna fall out. I just wanna say that piece.
And that's fine. And I have spent countless hours since our budget meeting looking at brand-new projects with townhomes and single-family homes and apartments. And I will get all that information to y'all for you to look at.
Well, yes, sir.
It will get your attention. I'll put it to you that way.
Well, and, and, and may I say something? And it may get my attention, however, to have it properly anal, uh, probably, properly analyzed by our economics, uh, by our economists that we have here, by our, by our section, to make sure that what you're saying is valid and, and possibly true, because it may or may not be true.
But it's not being analyzed by our planning department because that's not part of their, their job.
No, I, I did not say our planning, our finance department will, will look at it and, and make that assessment.
We don't get reports from the finance department on our proposed projects, Mr. Vance.
Well, I, I hear you, Mr. Singleton, but this is something that is gonna be analyzed and looked at more clearly and, and carefully so that we can make a informed decision as we go forward. We understand the situation, and we're going to look at it later on. That's why we are having this, having a consultant come back to us with this information and so that we can be able to make better informed decisions as we go forward.
Let me interject here. I agree with both of you. You're both making excellent points. Uh, they're, they're right in our long-term plan and the going to comprehensive long-term plan, long-range plan. The fourteen key guiding principles that we look at much have to do with character, much have to do with reasonableness. It also has three or four bullet points in there that talk about long-term financial sustainability. Will this project pay its own way based on cost of services? That's the question you're raising. And that's a very valid question. Likewise, Mr. Vance makes a very valid point that the long-term financial sustainability aspect of this project has not been evaluated. Uh, on one hand, we have information from a year ago that's already obsolete based on the re-evaluation, uh, based on the current cost of services. We're, we're in a gray area here. We're in a confusing, frustrating spot, I, I have to admit. Uh, now, on June twenty-fifth is my understanding that our consultant who came up with last year's cost of services analysis and the so-called break-even tax value number that goes with single-family homes will be presenting us with this year's numbers, this, this year's data that we can incorporate maybe more effectively, more consistently in our decision-making. It leaves us in a difficult situation right now. Mr. Singleton, you raised some very, very clear concerns, very real concerns. Are we adding projects? Are we adding properties that will be, uh, not financially sustainable in the long term? That's, that's a very valid question to ask. I don't have the answer tonight. I don't know if we have the ability to make that decision tonight. Um, I'm open to more, uh, comments or questions from council members on this extremely important question.
Mr. Mayor, here, and, and I'm gonna go ahead and call for the question.
Okay, there's been a motion made. Uh, was there a second to Mr. Matthews' motion?
Yes, Ms. Behringer seconded it.
Excuse me?
Ms. Behringer seconded it.
Thank you, thank, 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 okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, we'll call for a vote here, and, uh, based on differing opinions, I suggest we do a roll call vote just to make clear, uh, what our vote is. So, uh, let's start with Mr. Matthews. Your vote, aye or nay?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Okay, yeah, the motion passes by a three-to-one vote. Uh, thank you for your participation. Thanks for taking this seriously. Thanks for the issues that you raise, uh, and thank you planning staff for the job you've done. We still have a lot of work to do. So, uh, that, that concludes, uh, that part of the agenda. And, uh, since we've been here two hours, I'm gonna, uh, declare we have a short recess. We come back to talk about the budget discussion. I want us to be, uh, fresh and focused as we come back in ten minutes, ten after eight. We'll see you here. Be refreshed, focused.
Some additional new items. Those include contract service increases for finance and IT certifications required for our HR department and our legal department, as well as a pay increase for the attorney intern program. We are also recommending an engineering project manager that would be dedicated towards park projects, a Parks and Greenways planning manager, four police corporals, which will be, those will be hired in an internal promotional process and backfilled by new police officers, a right-of-way specialist. This request, one of the reasons it's so expensive is it does include a heavy-duty vehicle and equipment required for that work, a planner two, communications specialist, and an engineering technician. Other recommendations and inspections include one building inspector, three, one development services specialist, and two lead building inspectors. All four of these positions are funded through excess building permit revenue that has to be spent in the inspections area. We also funded the one FTE for training in fire. That was funded through the cost share. So we were able to make those adjustments without any real increases. And then the public art and housing rehabilitation partnerships, those were both funded at $50,000 each, and they were funded through ARP dollars. So these items were funded through other, other means than the tax rate. So a recap of where, how we got to where we are with the tax rate. We started with a revenue neutral rate of 53.5 cents. Then we added five cents to cover the total compensation package, then another 1.6 for our revenue savings plan changes, and then an additional 1.9 cents, which covers mostly positions and a few contract-related items. I wanted to throw this back out for you to, to review. This was something we presented to you at the work session. We've now included Cary and Roseville. We have their new tax rates. So you can see here where Garner falls in affordability related to other municipalities I'm seeing some people are still looking. If you want me to, I'll move on. So I do want to remind you of where we are in the process. So this was actually the proposed date for the June 4th adoption date, but as you recall, as we were going through the work session, there was some consensus that we might want to do it at the eight, the meeting on the 18th. When we think about next steps, what we need from all of you tonight is to reach some consensus and provide staff direction on what the tax rate needs to be for the adopted budget so that we can begin preparing the ordinance that will then be on the June 18th council agenda. And then we've thrown up here, looking at some of the titles that we might want to use for the new revenue savings plan. So these were just some, try to keep it simple. We have the capital obligation fund, the capital investment fund, and the debt service fund were some proposed titles to rename the revenue savings plan.
Wouldn't name it capital investment fund. Wouldn't use the word investment. That's where revenue savings program has been confusing. That's just Gray's opinion.
I'll say that the debt service fund is universal. That's something that is very common in a lot of other organizations. So when we all win the lottery and are no longer here, that is something that others that come behind will recognize what, what that is.
I would agree with that, too. In my view, capital obligation fund doesn't really define to the general public what that's for, but everybody understands debt service.
Good question, good comments. Let me hear a little bit more.
Debt service fund sounds fine to me, and isn't that what it's called for other municipalities as well? Is it commonly used name? Yes.
I'd agree with Gray. Let's not call it that.
I don't like capital investment. That, that's, I, debt service, I was made.
Debt service fund sounds good.
That's what it is. Going to repay debt.
We're, we're not taking a vote or passing a resolution, but I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding in the direction of the debt service fund. Thank you. Give us another easy one like that. Come on.
The next one's not as easy. So I think we need to reach some agreement on, on, on the tax rate. We've proposed 52 cents. That was the manager's recommended tax rate. And discussion on, on if that is appropriate, if, if anybody's interested in seeing something different, what does that look like?
What you're asking for, again, here's guidance so that you can prepare the final budget that you will present to this council, is it the June 18th meeting?
At the June 18th meeting, you will officially adopt the recommended budget, which includes the recommended tax rate.
We have a little time in between now and then to ask other detailed questions, et cetera, but we're trying to give you something to work with, with the 52 cent rate going, going forward. So let's, let's hear some conversation.
If I could just clarify for the record of the sake of the public that might be watching, the 52 cents is the Wake County property tax and the Garner tax rate together?
That is, 52 cents is just the town of Garner's tax rate.
And I think that we've learned recently that Wake County's projected tax rate is very, very similar to that as far as their tax collection goes, 51 and a half cents or something.
So they passed a rate last night of 51.35 cents is what they passed. They did increase their tax rate from the recommended by .3 cents.
Okay, in layman's terms, how many pennies on a, on $100 is that?
The county, at the county.
No, for both, because people look at it as the tax rate. They don't separate it.
So we'd have to go back and if we look at, I'm assuming what you want to see is what this amount is plus the county's rate on top of it.
Right, right.
So what I'll tell you is it does not change this order because we'd have to go back and calculate it and, and present something else, which we can do.
Wake County, what they approved at 51.35 and the revenue neutral was 46.36, and so it was an increase of 4.99.
Cents.
Cents, yes, yes. Excuse me, 5, 5.99, I'm sorry. Fifty, 46 plus five is 51, that's 4.99. 51.35 neutral was 46.36, that's one tenth of a penny. You know, they increased taxes four point above revenue neutral, 4.9 cents.
Let me ask the question that my neighbors will be asking me and looking at this chart right here. They say, okay, my home happens to be exactly the assessment of the median home value, the, the assessment. My home has been assessed at $380,000 this year, and, and my tax bill from Garner's going to be $1,980, and my tax bill from Wake County is going to be slightly less than that by a couple of bucks. How much more will I be paying this year than I paid last year?
So we would, so what, what I would tell your residents, they would be able to go on the tax calculator on the county's website. That will show that differential, but we could, we could show, we could amend this chart to show what, what last year's tax bill was and based upon, because we showed this last year, so we could pull that same information and, and show it side by side if that's helpful.
I think that would be helpful. I got communication from one citizen who said, my tax rate is going up 60%. And I don't think that's correct, but he, I don't think he understands how to calculate it.
Yeah, I think, and I've, I've heard similar comments, and they say, I got my new assessed value of my home and it went up 60%.
Right.
Does that mean, must mean my taxes are going up 60%, but our tax rate last year was 62, 62 cents, and now it's 52. That sounds like less, but my value went up, but I'm paying more, but not 60% more.
Right.
That's the confusing part.
There's a lot of confusion to the, in the general public's eye.
Yeah, so I guess what, what you're saying in a way, Ms. Behringer, is how do we explain this to our taxpayers? What, how, how can they predict theirs? How much change was it from what they paid on the same exact house that they lived in last year? Is it more? Yes. How much more? Not 60%.
So we also kind of keep up a chart that just shows the differential from year to year. So we can show that or we can show the same chart from last year. If you want to see everybody's, otherwise we can just show you over time, the town of Garner's increase.
My impression is that our rate, our, our tax bill per home is in the ballpark with the others, and, and people still want to say, well, that's interesting. I'm not thinking about moving, but really, how much more is it than last year?
I think that raises a good point, especially when you look at solid waste, annual fees, stormwater fees that all the other towns are paying, and Garner, we don't charge for those. And as you look at some of the solid waste fees, that, add that to the other, you, you talking about some, not counting your tax increase.
It's $25 a month, which I believe comes through their utility bill, I believe. I believe their bill.
It's on, it's on the utility bill, yeah.
It's all utility bill there, yes.
Yeah, I, I think you're making a very good point, Mr. Matthews, that any property owner at any of these home assessment values have to consider both the property tax and the fees, and Garner apparently is the only municipality that charges neither, the stormwater nor the solid waste. Some of them charge both, some of them charge one or the other, we're the only one that charges neither, and I'm very proud of that fact. There was a, at our budget retreat, our planning retreat, the question came up, should we consider adding a solid waste fee? And, and looking at our neighbors, that's, that's somewhere around 300 bucks a year, just rough figures, but I, I feel that that would be a very regressive tax in that the person who lived in the $200,000 value home, as well as the person who lived in the million-dollar assessed value, that they're each paying 300, but that's a much bigger pill, pill to swallow for the person living in the $200,000 assessed value versus a million. I, I, I live in, in a home with a higher-end value, and I don't mind paying more than my fair share to make it easier for everybody across the board. So I'm glad that we don't charge a, a, a solid waste fee nor stormwater fee, but we build it into the, the progressive property tax situation. So I like that a lot.
We, we do have a study undergoing, currently undergoing about studying for utility fee for stormwater, because we have a lot of old neighborhoods and old pipe underneath them, and we have to do something different than what we're doing. You can't hit the bonds for $10 billion and not be a blink, because we've had, our staff, our public works had to get make major repairs, two or three in Cloverdale the last four or five years where the whole system collapsed, the whole stormwater collapsed, now closed streets and everything, so that is being studied for a stormwater fee, which is, these numbers are an annual fee, so that's not as much, but we have to be concerned, just like on Garner Road right now, what they're doing. That's tied into the utility bills, but the stormwater is responsible for the town. So that's being studied, and it may be a number, but that's stuff we can't see. But it has to be taken care, it has to be prepared to be taken care of.
And there's not only one way to pay for it, and that's for, with tax dollars, property owners, one way or another, either a fee or tax, and we'll have to figure that out as we go. But so far, so good. What, what other guidance do you need from council, or what other questions does council have?
I'd just like to add one other perspective or maybe continuation. I, I think oftentimes the general public gets mixed up between percent and cents per hundred, and, and that's not, if you don't deal with that every single day, you know, it's easy to understand that, but I hear, I hear quite a bit of, of interchanging those figures, and that's not the way it is. So if we can get some kind of understanding in place, someplace that they can see a chart that explains that as they read it, that there's, that percent of value is not the same as pennies per hundred. And I'm not sure what that interpretation is.
Any comments, observations about how to explain this to many of our property owners?
There, there are some valuable resources on the county's website that kind of break out property values. There's actually a lot of information on the revow website that helps understand how Wake County evaluates property and, and how those, how you, what your tax bill, kind of explaining your tax bill. So I would, that would be one place to point them to, but if that's something that is of interest, we can continue, we can look into providing that as part of the budget moving forward.
And members of council, also, if you recall, once the budget is adopted, the staff does prepare a budget brief that we then share with, with residents. We post on the website, and we include it in the water bill. So Ms. Behringer, your, your questions and perspective is, is very helpful as we think about information that needs to be included in that budget brief, where to point residents to resources if they want to do a deeper dive into some of these issues. We could certainly provide that information to them in that brief that's on the website and mailed to residents.
That would be very helpful because there's, there's a predisposition to believing that something's being kept from them, and we know that's not true. It's a hard pill to swallow, no matter how much you have to pay, but whatever we can do to eliminate or at least reduce the assumption that something's being hidden is helpful.
If I could make a point to what you said, because there are those in our community that's, it's not, the computer's not the most friendly thing to them, and if, as like our manager said, if we could get, they could get something in that water bill, say, here's a perfect example, it's easier to understand if you got this, 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 that, I think that would really eliminate that, and that would, those that can go to the website and do all that stuff, you know, that's great, but those that can't, we've got them taken care of, too.
And we've been very successful about presenting the information in an easy-to-understand format for those who may not live and work in this world all the time. So make sure that we use graphics and graphs and those kind of things that really tell the story about the budget and what tax dollars are going to fund. And so these comments are really helpful to staff as we think about what needs to be included in FY '25 budget brief.
If I can make another comment, you know, I think budgets are always tough, and I think our, our budget session, we really got into a lot, which we reviewed again tonight, and with the growth of our, our town, it's a big business. I say a lot of time, we, we in charge of a big business here, and, and we're growing like a, we had a session with, last week, some office attended to online, and every community, every town's having the same problems that we, that we are. It's nothing new, I mean, right across the board, you know, we, I was asking some of the same, got the same problem, we got the same problem and same issue, but budgets are tough, but I think I, I like the, the fact of the fees we don't charge, which is a plus, and if we can communicate to the public easily what's going on, it's, it's this budget, it is what it is, and we've got to move forward. That's just my thoughts on it. We can't go back.
So the staff needs guidance because they have to prepare a budget document, a budget ordinance, so that's what they're looking for. We discussed it at our budget meeting, you know, there's a proposed 52, there's this, there's that, and so forth and so on, so that's where it's at.
So you want that tonight?
Yes, please.
Yes. I can go a thumbs up. I don't like increasing it more, but we've got a business to run here. People want the trucks, they want the police there, they want everything that's needed to live in our community, they want the parks taken care of, they don't want to see things falling apart, and, and that's why I'm going to support it.
I believe it was the county commissioners when they passed their budget yesterday, was it, that one of the, I believe Ms. Thomas, Shanika Thomas, made a comment, she said, growth never pays for itself, you know, and that's, that's something that's hard to swallow, but it doesn't pay for itself right away, and we have to, rather than complain about it and, and try to say that we're not going to do it, we have to find how to handle it. We have to find the solution instead of digging our heels in and saying, that's not right, that's not right.
My question is, what type guidance, guidance are you looking for tonight? Do, does it clear?
Some, some consensus on what the tax rate needs to be, so that, so we'll have a week and some time to turn around the ordinances and get that packet of information out to council ahead of the June 18th meeting. So if, if the, if, if there's a sense, a consensus that what's proposed is, is sufficient, then that's how we will prepare the ordinances.
And council, if I may remind you, part of our discussions for the current year budget was fully funding our compensation strategy, and so as you heard Ms. Warren talk about, we knew that going into FY '25, we were going to have to look at potentially going over revenue neutral to fully fund that compensation strategy. So that's where you see that initial five cents of just needing to cover those compensation costs for, for '25. What's before you tonight is bringing the tax rate up to 52 cents, so it, it takes into account the need to enhance and make simpler and more transparent the revenue savings plan and make sure that we're still investing in our capital in a way that, that meets our goals, not only for capital and debt payments, but also our future goals regarding capital projects here in town. And then the final piece really speaks to the staffing needs based on the growth we're seeing, also just based on the demand and the high-quality services that we all want to continue to provide. The recommendation to go to that 52 cents funds those 15 positions that we need to move forward.
Thank you, that's a very important point. We can't make it clear enough that a very significant part of, of this particular tax increase, and it's a tax increase, our, our tax bills are going to be more, is going for our employees. We want the best fire people, the, the best police, the best inspectors, the best planning. We fill some vacant positions because of the pay study and the comprehensive approach that we are now able to attract and retain the people that we, our department managers, and our citizens want doing their work. This is a very important part, and that was a very significant part of this tax here, is to get the best possible employees for the best possible service to our citizens. We can't overlook that. Part, and there's this other thing called inflation that we've been going through. Things cost more, asphalt costs more, street signs cost more, help costs more, gas costs more, cars cost more, and those are all things that we buy that, that adds to that. I think that our town staff through the years has done an excellent job of spending wisely, investing wisely, borrowing when necessary, as we talked about the renovation on the annex. I think the, the, the staff has been very responsible in their spending, nothing extravagant, nothing unnecessary, done an excellent job. We have hit the same stone wall that so many municipalities in the county have of the growth, keeping up with inflation, with the rising payroll cost, it just drives up the tax. The one ray of sunshine that I can see in, in the year to come, the two years to come, is what we heard Mr. Singleton and Mr. Vance talk about at length, and that, what is the cost of service for, for the basic residents compared to what is the tax revenue, the property revenue from that one? And this is where we've stumbled a little bit, I think, in the past, but as we get this new updated information based on the new valuations, I believe we will be able to make better financial decisions about the long-term financial sustainability of the properties that we add. We can't go back and change much the properties that are here. They are what they are. Many of them, I grew up here, and I grew up in a subdivision that was built in the 1950s. Those houses are still here, they're great houses, but they're not your million-dollar tax values, okay? But they are what Garner's made of, and we have to work around that. But we have to make sure, again, as Mr. Singleton, Mr. Vance both referred to, and as I've heard other council members say, that the properties that we add going forward, they need to be paying for themselves plus some. In, in the next 30 days, the next 60 days, we're going to have the data to do a much better job of evaluating the long-term financial sustainability of each project, each house, each business, each apartment complex that we add. I do see a, a ray of sunshine here. It might, it, it's not the light at the end of the tunnel being a train coming at us, it's really a way that we can progress. So a lot of factors here. So I don't have a vote, but my opinion is that we, we should endorse the 52 cent rate and, and move ahead, let you get on with business. The only person I haven't heard from specifically is one of our more senior members of the council here, Mr. Singleton. We'd like your input.
One little hint, I know you knew this budget stuff, so when you're talking about the compensation package and you want the best, you said firefighters and police inspectors, when you're talking to the budget director, you should always slip in, you want the best budget director.
Well, we have, that goes without saying.
Always slip that in there. Excuse me. I, I stated at the budget meeting how I felt the 5% increase is, is what I could support above revenue tax neutral because it does fund the compensation package, and that's where I'll stay.
Okay. Does that give you the guidance you need to move ahead?
What I'm hearing is that there's, there's support for the proposed budget as presented, but there is some interest in making sure that we provide good information to the citizens and residents of the community, and so we'll take those items back and put them as part of our budget and brief to make sure there's some clarity around what we're, what we're providing to our residents.
And I'll ask the town attorney, would it be helpful to do a vote on this, to, to solidify this issue as far as preparing the ordinance, or is just guidance enough from the council?
It can either be a vote, or if there's consensus of at least a majority of council that, that proposed tax rate is appropriate, then the budget ordinance can be prepared.
You would like a motion and a vote?
That would be helpful direction, yes.
We want it to be helpful. Okay, so my question is, is there a motion that we, we recommend the 52 cent tax rate to move ahead with the budget?
I'll move.
Mr. Vance moves, Ms. Behringer seconds the motion to, to accept the 52 cent tax rate. Okay, is there any more discussion on, on this item? I'll call for a voice vote on this. All in favor of approving that tax rate at this point, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay?
Nay.
Okay, three to one, looks like it, it carries, and we'll try to get everybody on board, including our citizens, to understand and to help us make good decisions going forward to minimize our tax increases in the future. Thank you, Ms. Warren. Anything else on this topic?
No, Mayor, just want to thank you and the, the council for providing that guidance and for working with us through this, this challenging process, but as you can see, we've been able to rise to the occasion to really meet the needs and priorities and values of who we are as a community, as a town. So we look forward to preparing that budget ordinance for you.
Thank you, thank you very, thank all of you for your hard work. I always think about the two people who work on this year round, and that's Sarah and Ian. They do nothing but work on this year round in conjunction with the department heads who are here as well, trying to analyze, what do we need, what will we need a year from now in terms of staff, in, in terms of facilities, how have we used the money that we allocated last year? Thank you for your attention to detail through these challenging times. Thank you, thank you. Okay, okay, moving right along to committee reports, and let's start with Mr. Vance and see if there are any committees that you want to make a report on.
No reports tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Behringer.
The Veterans Committee is going to be meeting on Monday at nine at White Deer Park, and we're going to be looking at quite a few things for the coming year, and we'll, I'll have a better report on it a little bit later, but that'll be Monday at nine at White Deer, and anybody's invited to come.
Man, I tell you what, we, we have a powerful veterans community here who are active and appreciative, and we can't, we can't thank them enough, and thank you for what you're doing to keep it organized. Thank you. Manager reports.
I just have one update. I'm going to ask Mr. Hodges if he will provide an update on the Pulte site development and some of the concerns and issues brought forth by some residents. So, Mr. Hodges?
Yes, Ms. Miller. Council, Mayor and council, at a previous meeting, we had reported to you an update that some of the initial concerns raised about some potential hauling from other sites to the Cambria Development Site, a, a situation had been determined that someone in a, in a subcontractor capacity was doing something outside of what they had been previously instructed to do, and that relationship is no longer in place. We provided that update to you previously. Just wanted to also let you know that our staff, led by Mr. Pageant, who's here tonight, continues to monitor the situation there. Also, they are working with DEQ as well as the Forestry Service, because they both have regulatory jurisdiction over a site like this, because it is not yet annexed into the town. So permits for burning have to come through the Forestry Service, and then DEQ has to be involved with the overall clearing and other parts of the site work. So they are constantly, in constant contact with those folks, and so far, the investigations that those agencies have done, everything seems to continue to be in compliance. We did also want to update you tonight, though, that there is an application for a blasting permit, and that's commonly done at development sites where blasting has to be done, but since there was heightened attention to this particular site, we wanted to let you know that there was a permit for that, and a staff will be on site for the initial blastings to ensure that everything is in compliance, but we wanted to share those updates with you tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Pageant is also here. If there's anything more specific he can provide to you tonight.
In relation to the blasting, John, and this property backs up to the, Mr. and Ms. Lee's property, can we give them a heads up about when it's supposed to happen so they'll know? Can we send them an email or make a phone call so they'll have a heads up?
Yes, sir. We'll contact everyone who we have contact information for tomorrow.
Especially the school, too, right across the road, the high school.
But we will, we will try to let as many neighbors know as we can. This is, again, a common practice that's done with development, and while we'd like to reach out and be as good neighbors as possible, it may be difficult to find all the right contact persons to make aware, but we will, we will share that with anyone who we can.
Just a little Garner history. When I was at East Garner, there was no 40, and they were blasting over that quarry. And you could see the building shake, you could hear it shake, and that was a common occurrence to have blasting at the quarry when you were at school. That's a long time ago when I was there. I'm sure they still blast now, but I bet with the interstate there, you know, it's not quite the same.
Did it have electricity at that school back then?
It did. The original structure was built in the 1930s back then, but I was in school in the 70s, so if it was 40 years old, didn't seem very old then.
You were, sure you were.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. I don't have any other reports to share with the council this evening.
How about attorney reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, in conjunction with the budget presentation for a decision on the 18th, I will be checking back with you on any affiliations you have with nonprofits, which may require some special votes to be taken to make sure that everyone's in compliance with the Transparency Act. So I'll follow up with you individually on that. The other thing, I have sent to you, the Commitment to Civility, that's a new program that the North Carolina League of Municipalities is promoting this year. There is a virtual training on June 20th, that's a Thursday, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. If 75% of town council attends the training and commits to civility, then the town can get recognized at the next year's city vision as one of the Commit to Civility municipalities in the state. So I believe the mayor is encouraging everyone to either sign up or you can attend here in person. I have a registration, and we'll be in the conference room.
Let me make it even simpler. I'm going to ask our town clerk to register all of our council members who have not already registered for the session on June 20th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and I'm going to strongly encourage every council member to please join us in person to do this exercise. It's only two hours. I know we're very, very civil, this is one of the most well-oiled machines of any municipal government I've ever seen. The people get along well. I just want to maintain that. I want us to develop a common language that we can talk to each other the same way and still set the example for Wake County of civility on a council. I really would like every council member to attend that, even if you have to do it remotely. Mr. Dellinger, I hope you'll be well by then, but if you're not, you can tune us in on the big screen. The rest of you, I'd sure like to see you in person on June 20th, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And then we'll have a 30-second, excuse me, a 30-minute recap discussion among ourselves at the end, just to talk about how we get along. So if you would, Stella, anyone who has not already registered, get them registered.
Good, I'm good.
There's no mandatory continuing education for council members. It's not like realtors or insurance agents or attorneys, you don't have to go get recertified. But please give us this two and a half hours once this year for this kind of training. Thank you. Anything else?
That will conclude my report for tonight.
Okay, and I'll start with Mr. Matthews down here. Are there any reports from any council members, anything not committee-related or anything else?
Not for me.
Mr. Singleton?
I just will mention, follow, but I mentioned earlier, the, you know, you mentioned last, had the moment of silence with the family that was taken, and you think of that, I mentioned the impact of Grayson Murray and his family here in Garner, and then Mr. Creech, who served many years. And there aren't many people around who remember their service here, because they, Mr. Creech was last mayor in 89, and Mr. Watkins was mayor until 91. So it's been a long time since they served, but anyway, I can remember, and you can remember. I can remember the days back then when you ran campaigns, you didn't have the signs we have now, you had posters that you tacked on the light poles. And they banned them, because you'd go up and down the street, and there would be light pole signs, and they had their picture on it everywhere. And that, they were banned, thank goodness.
You mean, we're not allowed to use our pictures anymore?
No, 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 those were banned, to tack them onto the light poles, I think that's banned. But anyway, that was a different time. And anyway, the work they did helped lay the foundation for a lot of what we have, including the site. As I talked to Mr. Sample last week, he was at the funeral, and they had to decide where to put the new town hall, when the one downtown burned, and this is the choice that they selected, and served the town well, and over the years, and with different developments, and the town acquiring different buildings that grid reduced prices, you know, it's a town hall campus. And you have to give credit also to one of our town managers, Mr. Bynne, who swapped off the church property up here that's getting ready to get torn down for the Buffalo property for Lake Benson Park, and gave the Lutheran church that corner, because they wanted a bigger corner, and the town got this land behind the town hall to expand the campus for future needs, and guess what? That was a good call, and that was made in the late 80s, as you remember, so.
Sometimes you don't know until 40 years later, well, it was a good decision.
40 years or 40 years, whatever, it was a good decision.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, and thanks again for mentioning Mr. Creech and the contribution that he made, and I got to take this opportunity, too, to give a shout out to Rick Mercer, who put together the information, got it out before the funeral, and it even made the WRL news to a wider audience to get out the word of a great contributor and to remember somebody, and that precipitated, and by the way, that was ghostwritten by Joe Sample, a former newspaper publisher. But thanks to everybody who helped get the word out there. Report, Mr. Vance?
Report.
Man, oh, man. In that case, there's no closed session, right? No closed session. I may be willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Behringer, seconded by Mr. Vance, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Don't make me shake this gavel at you.
I won't say nay to that.
Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned.
Let's have some civility.